We'll call work session, we'll call work session to order. This might take a little getting used to, so we'll see how that goes. We'll have a short training session tonight or that or next week. You want to do it tonight? Is it good with everybody? That's work session will work.
So, welcome to the courthouse. And for many of you, it's probably your first time using the electronic devices. And so when we start a meeting, you'll have, I'll try to do a roll call attendance ready for you on your device there and let me put that up so you can see what that will look like. So you're just going to answer either yes or no. Yes, I believe is green and no is red. And you can see that on your device in front of you now if you want to go ahead and say, put your answer in so that records your attendance at this meeting.
We just press and then we did for that.
No ma'am, you just, just touch it. It's a touchscreen. So Ms. Kerr and Mr. Johnson have not registered yet. There, nope. There it goes.
They all light up green. They're supposed to light up green on our screen.
So, and then once all, everybody has registered, I can stop and I can see that there are seventeen present. Eventually, we will get the voting on the screen. It's a little difficult right now. I'm working with Lonnie and Mr. Ted to get that situated. But I can see that, yes, there are seventeen of you here. Of course, we have three absent. So to request to speak or to even use your microphone, you would press the bar in front of you and that will turn your microphone on. For commission meetings, it'll be on a request basis. So when you do touch your bar, we will see blinking light up here. The chairman will recognize you before you are allowed to speak and we can turn your microphone on from up here and you can have the floor. And so there's not going to be anybody talking over anybody during the commission meeting. And we're going to try to go back to the decorum and be respectful of each other. And this will be very different from the community center. I'm trying to think if there's anything. Roll call voting. We've used this in the past years where roll call, even though we do have your voice, your vote recorded with your name, Rita is still going to go down the roll, call your name, and that's when you will enter your vote into your device. I think that's everything that I needed to go over. Are there any questions? Is there anything that I might have missed? I'm going to take that as a no and pass it over back tonight. Yes, sir.
So for the chairman of the different subcommittees, they'll need to get with you to go through that. You've already gone through it with me and I know you've gone through it with the mayor, but it can be a little tricky.
It can be a little tricky. So chairman, I'll try to work with you at your future meetings. I'll try to be here for the first couple of them. And also secretaries, if there is anybody willing to help record meetings so I don't have to show up there all the time, that would be much appreciated and please see me after work session.
Thank you. Then we'll go into the agenda for commission. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh. So all open court, we'll have an invocation and pledge. Mr. Whitaker will be responsible for invocation. Brian Crook will be here to do the pledge to flag. Ms. Rita will do the roll call and then we'll have approval of minutes. Under announcements, the volunteer fire department is celebrating one hundred years tomorrow afternoon from five to seven. It would be great if you could make that. They're honoring all the past fire chiefs and there'll be refreshments and we have, the state senate has issued a proclamation honoring our one hundred year celebration. So it would be great if you could come for that. Then we'll set the agenda, have citizen response. I'll have a mayor's report. Interesting, I was, I was contacted by someone this week who told me that they're relooking at the length of the bridge on the one forty-one extension, that an engineer has shown a plan how they can save money, some money on the bridge. If that's approved, supposedly it will save ten million dollars, but I think the engineer will get half that for saving ten. But you could be looking for that, that information coming out pretty soon if it's approved by T-Dot. So we may not have the longest bridge in Tennessee. Which, oh shucks, that's what I was thinking. And I'll discuss that in the mayor's report. Then we'll have committee reports and move into active business. We have three appointments to be considered next week. Board of Zoning Appeals, Mark Presley's back up for reappointment. Planning Commission Katie Dillon is up for reappointment. And Board of Equalization Jimmy Crabtree is under consideration. Then we'll go into resolutions. We have two. Resolution twenty twenty-four oh five eight oh two for surplus items. I was hoping the sheriff was here to be here this evening, but he will, he'll give a report on that. We need to discuss that, Amy, tonight. Oh, it's the equipment that's been in storage for like ages, much of it out of TVA, I understand. And they're wanting, is that correct? And they're wanting to, yes, sir.
Do we know if that's going to be an online auction or is that going to be an auction held in county?
I'm not sure.
Normally it's a gov deals.
Oh, next item would be resolution twenty twenty-four oh six eight oh three. ECD, road name, Hill Rock Lane. And that's, that may be in your notes, just aware. That is exactly. Located off of Gravel Hill Road, one point seven five, five miles north of Hawkins Branch. So that will be on consideration. I'm sorry? The date, please note the date change, yes. Last quarterly meeting, instead of August ninth, twenty twenty-three, it's April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Note that correction, please. Any questions there? If not, we'll move to ordinances. First reading of ordinance three oh three, twenty twenty-four oh three. Blasting permit. David Thomas, would you like to address that?
So the planning commission put together a blasting permit for the collection of information. There was no fee attached to that because they don't have the authority to do such. Codes and zoning looked at that and liked what they had and wanted to attach a hundred dollar fee to that to cover administrative cost. Rosalie is using the permit software that she has and by adding this permit to that, there's an extra charge. And so this hundred dollar fee would go to cover that charge so that there's no added cost to her.
Any questions there? If not, we'll, I'm sorry? Yes, sir, Mr. Rita.
I'm just curious, if we're sending a hundred dollar fee to inform people, where do I see on this, on this permit form where people are actually being informed? This is just a form that the person fills out. Are we putting any signs out on the property? Any kind of requirement on that? Or are we just hitting people for a hundred dollars because we can?
So if you'll look at the bottom and it says copy two, gas department, police department, fire department, water sewer department, EMS, and a project file to be kept in the codes and zoning office. At current, there is no way if an incident happens for the police department to know who to contact for, to resolve that incident. Wayland was very excited when he found out that the planning commission had come up with this permit so that he would have that information. Matt Beatty also appreciated being notified when blasting would be going on. So he could make sure he had enough staff for, for those situations in case an incident happened there. Fire department also appreciated having the heads up, especially if there's going to be any blasting material stored on the property. If they have to show up to an incident, it's nice to know what to be prepared for. So it's not so much a notifying the general public. It's letting the county departments know, hey, blasting is going to be going on. And like I said, the hundred dollars was put forth by a motion from codes and zoning just to be able to pay for the administration cost of this.
Any further questions?
So there's no reason, so there's no informing the public of this, yet we, yeah, we're going to charge. If, if we want to inform the, these departments, which, which is great, I'm all, I'm all for that. Send them an email or send a phone call, hey, so and so is black, is blasting, I'll say, I just, this just, this just to me seems like another one of these things that like, is it, is it really necessary? Whatever the will of the body is, I guess.
So when Rosalie brought this up as far as a fee being associated to it, the point is with it being on her software, any individual who needs the permit can go online, fill out the permit, not having to come to her office. But there is a fee every time we attach a permit to that, that software.
The, there'll be signs, he's talking about signs, the Jones Brothers has put up signs, talking about the blasting out in that area, what are we doing, all that, that was. But what we have is, is if somebody don't know and somebody gets a rock through their house, then they call the police department, then the dispatcher will know who to contact about who, what happened and why, and that way they can send appropriate people to these people to help them out.
As I'm reading through this and I may have missed it somewhere, is this permit just, hey, you paid your hundred dollars, you filled it out? It's automatically approved or is there an approval to this permit?
The way the planning set up the permit, there is not necessarily an approval. It's a, did you fill it out or did you not?
The word's not necessarily an approval. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to picket words, but not necessarily doesn't mean no. Is there an approval under this? Someone has to approve the, the fact that you have, if I go, and all I'm speaking on is this, if I ask for a burn permit in Tralala County today before May fifteenth, I have to, I am, I'm okay. But if I go to, after May fifteenth through, May fifteenth through like October fifteenth, I require to, to grab a burn permit. I have to have approval for that burn permit. I'll get an email back saying I've been approved. Does someone have to approve the fact that we are blasting in certain area or not under this current piece? And if no, on this case, is that something that can be changed without coming before this by voting on this piece now? Or does that have to come before this commission, before it could be changed?
To my understanding, planning commission cannot pass laws. We passed a permit as that committee to gather the information for the entities, the departments of the county. It coming before this committee and having a fee associated to it by ordinance then makes it into law. So then, yes, it would be an approval or a disapproval at that time. If they fill out the permit, then it's approved as long as they meet all the state requirements. And if they turn in all the information listed on the checklist, they would have had to meet state requirements. The biggest thing we found is when we talked to the, the state fire marshal, they have nothing in their process when a person comes in to their department and gets a blasting permit to notify any local departments at all. And this is to fill in that blank. The only reason for the actual amount to be associated was because of the extra fee. If the extra fee is an issue, then we can amend it, take the fee off and just pass it and make the, the blasting permit a law at that point.
Let it be known, I had no objection to the hundred dollar fee in that case. That didn't discuss the fee. My discussion is approval or non-approval. Is it automatic or is it requiring someone to send this individual? How do they know they were approved? I don't read that in this language is all I'm saying. It's not in front of me. Maybe I'm missing it, but with the state, when they fill out a blasting permit, they would have to get approval to do blasting in that area. That's not in this. So if, before someone does blasting in the state of Tennessee currently, they have to fill out with the state and get approval for that blasting to take place. It's already been approved by the state before they came to us, is what I'm getting at here in this case. Is, I'm fine with the wordage and the, and the, the hundred dollar fee. Are we saying we're putting an additional approval on top of it is all. I don't see it in here. It's just, you filled it out, you didn't. What's the penalty if you chose, you didn't fill it out? I don't see that language in here.
A bit further, G. G and R C. Got to get that right. Probably needs to go back to maybe edit that a little bit, put a little more teeth to it. Would be the, my reckoning, it is absent from this particular piece and
So is that something, Mr. Beller, that we can just add through as far as the ordinance? Because the permit was done that way because it came through planning, not this body. So we would just do that through the ordinance and add that additional wording that way?
Over here. That's an excellent question. Before this was ever brought up, anyone who is going to blast, who does give them permission to do that? Real permission. Can I just get some dynamite and go blast? So who gives that permission?
They have to have permission from them. There's also, if I'm not mistaken, there's statutory blasting. It's a formula. It's actually in the Tennessee code annotated about how they do the blasting. Most blasting companies I've ever dealt with will use seismographs and put them in various locations before they even start blasting. So they do, they are a, what you refer to as an ultra hazardous activity blasting is. And which means that in blasting, they are strictly liable for the damages that they call, cause in most instances. We just don't have any local regulatory authority over it. So I think this, the design of this, and correct me if I'm wrong commissioner, was to, to kind of regulate that a little bit. That way we could apprise our local agencies and put them on notice of when any blasting company were coming in.
So in order for someone to fill that out, they would need to be able to prove, show their proof. So would have, something need to be on the form showing they have given their proof?
There's a checklist, the way I understood it, is that not correct? That is, to develop, that they would have to meet those checklist with, before they even start with the blasting. Is that correct?
In the middle of the blasting permit in your packet, you can see the checklist there for blaster certificate of insurance, Tennessee explosive users registration certification, the federal license of purchase and the holder's card, the handler's card. So they've already had to have gone through the state process to make that checklist, to have that information. Like I said, this was put together as an information gathering device so that we would have all that information, know that this isn't necessarily just for large construction companies like Jones Brothers or Enbridge. This is for smaller companies putting in a, a basement, putting in a swimming pool who might not necessarily follow everything like they need to. This will be something to kind of take in some of that information, make sure all those I's and T's are dotted and crossed. Well, if they have the information, the states already done that. So she's just collecting the information. That's why we wanted it added to the permit software. So it would be as little extra work on her as possible. All the information is put online, all the documentation's uploaded and she can verify it's right there.
Anyone? Okay. I'm sorry?
I would just like to see us have, have some kind of mechanism, just speaking of Mr. Donner's point, yeah, John Rose putting up signs, which is, which is great. The public should be informed, but there's nothing in here that, that requires it. If we're going to be charging people, I'd kind of like to see us put some kind of sign requirement.
Mr. Beller, any comment? I'm, I'm going to respond to you this way, Commissioner Gregory, you know, depends upon the, what the project is. I mean, if you've got a large, you're blasting through a hillside and build a road, then that's going to affect a lot more folks, given the nature of what needs to be done. If you're putting an in-ground pool in, I guess, how do you do that in the way of, and I don't know, and it's not my forte, but how do you notify the general public other than by maybe an ad in the local, local paper or maybe on Facebook? Are you talking about sending a specific piece of information or a sign in all directions?
Well, when we rezone or when we have a property up for rezoning, we have signs that say, hey, this stuff, we not put some kind of sign just on this property, even for small, it's just a small, hey, so and so is approved for blasting these dates or whatever, no. That'd probably be something for the codes and zoning committee, the, the form, how it would take, but I just, I feel like it ought, ought to be there in some form or fashion.
And I understand with the rezoning, you're talking about notifying contiguous property owners, adjacent property owners of a particular rezoning that would affect their parcels. But in this instance, you're talking about seismic waves that may affect a lot larger area than just simply put. So it's something food for thought for, for Mr. Thomas.
So that's actually very doable. We, we didn't think about that because of the state requirements already, you know, Jones, Jones Brothers already has signs posted for blasting. You can go over to Gallatin and their areas, you know, those signs are already put out there. But we could easily, I mean, we'd have to charge a little more for the fee because we'd have to chart, we'd have to actually make a top header for each project. But we could easily do blasting and then put the date period of what, you know, the times between when they're going to be blasting. We could, I mean, we can do that and that could be something that I can bring before the committee to add, when we add the language to the ordinance to add that also. If, if that's something that this body wants, wants to do, that, that's fine. We were trying to keep the fee as nominal as possible. Talking with Jones Brothers, they helped Rosalie kind of put this together with looking at ordinances or, yeah, blasting ordinances from Wilson County, Rutherford County and Sumner County. Jones Brothers were kind of the finny pig for this. They were the first ones up. And they were very helpful and appreciated what we were doing. It makes their jobs easier is what they told Rosalie.
Good discussion. We'll move on to ordinance three oh four, twenty twenty-four dash oh four, rezoning C one slash A one to C one on highway two thirty-one north. David, would you like to speak to that, please?
Yes, it's a rezoning there, just north of the four-way stop. The land, it was subdivided and it left the parcel ha, not quite half, but a good portion of agricultural and the other one is, is commercial already. They're wanting, the potential buyers are wanting to go ahead and have the whole thing commercial. It is on a major thoroughfare and would support commercial traffic. So it came from the planning commission with a favorable approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comment? Mr. Gregory?
One question, looking at the map here, the very bottom of that lot, it looks like there's some kind of building, I can't tell if that's a house or something, is that?
So the map that you're looking at is really outdated. We had the same problem in planning and really had to kind of walk through that. The house is not included in the property. Like I said, it was subdivided and that if you, trying to, if you're looking at the map, I don't have the drawing. Trying to sit, no, it's not here. No, the house is not part of it. That's a whole, I think it's like an acre, acre and a half lot with the house. And then so it's everything north of that is what they're wanting to rezone.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Then we'll move right along to budget amendments. Mr. Gully, would you like to give us your recommendations from budget finance?
So everything before you did come, I'll, I'll speak this way first, did come with a favorable recommendation of, all voting members that were present. There were no nay votes against any item that's in front of us for a budget amendment. There were quite a bit of discussion on a few. If you want to discuss those, we certainly can. Overtime seems to be a discussion pretty heavily. There are some changes that we can discuss on why overtime is the case if need be. If you want to go back and look at budget finance video, I hope it will be clear tonight for some of those pieces of why. But don't mind discussing those as well. But everything in here is with a favorable recommendation from the budget finance. At this time, that's really all I have to say on it.
I'm wondering on the overtime, if that's something that personnel needs to take up. Because I know that the, there was a policy change when we adopted the new, and I say we, the, the county commission adopted the personnel policy that took holiday pay instead of it being a standalone extra, it became regular pay. And so then it counted towards overtime, which then increased your overtime over the major holidays. That alone accounts for quite a bit of some of the overtime. And maybe we need to revert back to the old policy when that, as far as that's concerned?
Comments on that? And we need to make that a point of discussion at our, at our session next week, do you think? Does the commission on Monday night need to make a recommendation in that, that way? Mr. Beller?
If I may speak here, I would encourage us to look at the policies clearly beforehand and what was spoken as the personnel policy that was put into place and voted on by we, the commission. I don't remember the we, the commission, we voted and approved a budget and it was sort of approved that the, the salary system went with the approved budget. So I think it would be more pertinent on us if, if we look at in a week's time, maybe that's the case, but I think we need to look at all parameters of where we're at right here in this case before we just look at it. I don't think on the sheriff's overtime, it is just due to, or the MS overtime, it is just due to those pieces. We have one major piece that I continue to hear, which is a short staffing situation in each of those departments. When you are short-staffed, you bring in overtime individuals working to make that shift covered. I do know that there is a portion, certainly that we're seeing being the cost of covering a vacation pay, a holiday pay in, in place there. There, that is not, I'm not disagreeing that that policy might need to be looked at. But I think in a week's time, we might need to be very careful to look at the entirety of that policy and where we stand on it before we're, I won't disagree that the numbers I don't like. And I encourage budget finance and I encourage the members of this body, don't just look at the percentage numbers that we're seeing, look at the last year or two, if you have records of those. And I'm sure, Ms. Amy, I apologize for saying this, but I I'm sure Ms. Amy would probably be willing to get you some of those budgeted numbers and those final numbers. So if you, if you think about it, take a budget from July when the budget was approved and look at that budget in June, then do it again for the next year. You can get a lot more eye on what's going on than you can by just looking at those percent numbers. I certainly encourage you not to look at the outputs, but to look at inputs. If you know me, that's something I always talk about, inputs are where, what got us to where the output was. The input is what money were changed throughout that year, that budget and where those budgets go. I encourage you to do your homework on those before we really dig into a week's worth of time of saying we want to change, look at changing a policy in a week's time. I'm not disagreeing that the policy may need some adaptions or, or changes to it, but we need to be very careful that we look at that policy in its entirety and, and be very vigilant of what moves those moves make. Chess is a game that we want to play a little slower than in a hurry. It'd be my statement there.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Mr. Beller, if you want to comment on that? I think Mr. Gully's giving I think Mr. Gully's given a very wise point. Put a lot of effort into the personnel policy and there's a difference between policy and the administration of a policy. And it's very complicated. So to go and to just wholesale pick apart the policy, I don't necessarily recommend that without a full full barrage of all of the information that you need to have. I think the issue of trends comes into play. But you also couple that with the things, the shortfall in staffing. We talked about earlier in tonight about the amount of overtime as a result of increased runs at Troustal Turner. All of those pieces of information are essential before you, you get into that area of just taking away maybe an expectation from a lot of your employees in Harsburg, Troustal County. So, and you've got to be mindful of what was traded off in order to get to the policies that we've got right now. And so I would encourage everyone maybe to go back and listen to the videos of the discussion before making that decision to pull a provision out of that policy, particularly the holiday pay. I think it's better to slow walk that than to have any type of initial reaction. That's just my counsel to this body.
Yes, sir. And just for clarification, in case I misspoke or was misheard, I suggested it go to the personnel committee to look at. I made no suggestion that we do anything on next week's meeting. I completely agree with Mr. Gully that that would be very short sighted and I mean, that's a ready, shoot, aim kind of situation. I do know that that change of policy did affect the amount of overtime. And when we're looking at overtime, anything we can do to correct maybe an oversight to save us some overtime cost might need to be looked at. That's, that was all I was trying to get at.
Any other discussion? Any other line items? Anyone has a question on Mr. Gully?
Just to bring one piece to the table. Mr. Dennis brought this out in budget and finance, and I think he did a great job of bringing it out. You'll notice that the EMS overtime is a draw from within the fund. That is from medical personnel to overtime line item. In other words, that fund was fully budgeted. There's not enough personnel. The difference that we are seeing, and I will say this, Ms. Amy hopes, Ms. Amy, if I misspeak, you're certainly speaking on it. The hope, the not guaranteed, not a certainty, that the numbers we're looking at tonight on those pieces for next Monday nights should get us through the end of this fiscal year. That is the hope, that is twenty five percent of a, that we are remaining in the budget for this piece. So the hope is those numbers in the sheriff's department get us through there. Speaking of what we're saying, the sheriff's department is the one that currently definitely has an issue because it is pulling from fund balance. In other words, the numbers were not there to cover the dollars. We are adding money to that fund. If everybody understands what we're saying there in this case. I'm not, don't take me what I'm saying wrong. I'm not saying that that's a mistake of the sheriff. That's not at all what is being spoke here. I'm saying there are situations here where we are getting more overtime that is incurring a fund balance draw from both one oh one and one eleven in this. Whereas the overtime of the EMS is not a fund balance draw this year. Now, if you go back a year, at the same time, it was a fund balance draw, which negated a larger budgeted amount for this year's physical budget. So when I'm talking numbers, I'm talking two different budgets, the year ago budget and this budget. There's a reason that we're seeing, both are seeing an increase is what I'm saying. We are still having to deal with an increase. I encourage you to go back and know your numbers and know what those numbers said. I think Ms. Amy would be more than happy to get it to a June first budgeted amount and a actually really only have to look at the June, the end of June budget piece would cover every bit of that because it would tell you what was budgeted and what the actual numbers were estimated to be at that time. I encourage you to know those, not just look at the percents we're looking at today.
One question, just to speak to the point Mr. Gully made about the difference in the fund balance draw and the internal transfer like EMS, if it's a sheriff, is that short staffed? And I don't doubt that that he is short staffed. Would we not expect there to be a similar some kind of amount remaining in the regular pay that could have been transferred?
From what I have gathered, some of the short staffing is not lack of positions hailed, but lack of individuals, maybe sicknesses, maybe things of that nature that are being incurred at this time. People that are having to have shifts covered for maybe not a lack of individuals available at this time. So I think we're reading that a little different in this case. And that's the information that has been given to me when I've asked at this point. It's the only reason I share it on out because it was told to me, it's not necessarily individuals not hired, it's individuals that maybe are not able to work at that time, maybe individuals that are having shifts covered for, for other reasons. It is a dangerous job. People get injured on the job from time to time. I think you have some deputies that have been injured in some situations in the last couple of months that are unable to work. That position still has to be covered. So I don't disagree with your statement that it should be, but I don't think it's an underst as much the same situation is understaffed and the EMS as it is understaffed at the moment. And so the individuals are on the payroll, not able to work, from what I've gathered at this point. As well as, and I will mention that again, the sheriff has mentioned this many times and I wish he would come in and be more, I'm not putting this towards the sheriff. He keeps mentioning that it is incurring a large cost to transport individuals to court for Troustal Turner. And we are continuing to hear that as being a cost. I can't, I don't, I don't have a way of seeing the numbers. I'm a numbers guy. I don't have a way of seeing those numbers of what that cost really is. I know I've heard the sheriff's department, multiple individuals having to be sent for multiple mile drives. They've got to get paid, folks, plain and simple.
Amy, on the EMS budget, correct me if I'm wrong, because my memory is not good. The budget for this fiscal year that we're currently in was actually ten percent less than last year's? Is that correct?
I can't confirm on the percentage. I do know that we budgeted the overtime much less than what we did last year. But that last year was also with a lot of amendments to it.
That being said, so it would, it would seem to be based on the budgetary of EMS's overtime that the director has done a much better job of getting a handle on that and being able to use those funds adequately to cover everything. And I'd like him to be commended for the job.
Any other comment?
Amy Finer stood right. These figures here is for work's already been done. Is that right?
Most of them. Like Mr. Gully said, I'm hoping this covers the rest of the year.
Right. Well, if it's already been done, ladies and gentlemen, we got to pay these people. If you want to look at policies and change, that's fine, because you still go out and pay this right here.
Thank you. Good discussion. Any other line items there under budget amendments anyone wants to discuss? If not, we'll move right along. We'll have some notaries to approve. We'll discuss other business and ask for public comment. Anything else come before work session? Yes, ma'am.
I do want to note that on budget amendment one thirty one oh two, the purpose is to correct line items and add a revenue line item of hybrid and electric vehicle registration. The purpose was a typo on my, my part, so please correct that to correcting line items and adding a revenue line item of hybrid and electric vehicle registration.
Yes, sir. Since you've opened it for discussion, I'd like to discuss the actions that were taken in the January meeting of the commission. As a committee, do we want that can, that type of behavior to continue? And I'd like to know what the will of this group is as far as, I mean, I know there's censuring that can be done or do we just let it go and who cares how anyone behaves in this body?
Mr. Beller, would you address that, please? I assume, Commissioner, that you're referring to the speeches that were given on that day?
Yes, sir. The behavior of Commissioner Brendan Crook to be, or Brian Crook, to be exact.
Okay. And you're, you're, you're asking what this body can do? Is that, what's your question exactly?
I'm asking what's the will of this body? What, what do they want to do?
Okay. That question's directed toward the commission, sir. I don't know if there's anything I can add to it unless I'm asked specifically about it.
I, in no way do I agree with the statements that Mr. Crook made at that time, but it's been three months. I could see doing a censure, but I almost feel at this point, it'd almost be better just to just move on at this point. Now, if, now if something like that happened again, obviously it should be addressed, but I think with the time that's passed, let's just move on.
My point of bringing it up is, well, one, this one, this particular incident has cost the county millions of dollars in having to find another site. The taxpayers are going to have to pay that. They're the ones who are going to have to eat that cost in the long run. If we do nothing now, there's nothing to prevent it from happening again. So if we're not going to do anything to try to separate the commissioner's actions from the body as a whole, we at least need to come up with some sort of regulation ordinance, however you want to frame it, so that there is some sort of penalty, there is some sort of action that can be taken the next time any of us decide to just blurt out, you know, false accusations with no evidence and cost the county millions of dollars in the process.
Yes, sir, Mr.
Well, we do have the code of conduct for the commission, rules of commission that the previous commission, previous chairman put together, but let's look at that, at that and see if there's anything that needs to be added or anything in there that can address it.
Any other comments?
My understanding is there's really no teeth to that code of conduct, so it's kind of just paper tiger at best. Mr. Beller, I mean, other than censuring, there's really nothing else we can do, is there?
In all my research and even consulting about this issue, I don't know that there's anything other than a public censure that's available to this body. And all that does, it has no legal effect. It is just condemning a particular action. I will say this, whatever code of conduct or whatever is applied by this body, when you apply it to one, you apply it to all. Discussion?
Maybe we could go back over the code of conduct and maybe if we need to make any improvements or adjustments, we could do that and then bring forward a new published version of it.
Any further discussion? Anyone? Not, all in favor, motion to adjourn? Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you for your time and effort.